Good evening and welcome to the March 14th, 2023 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you're with us tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to city council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. Our light system, which is three minutes. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. And after three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of the council. Matters that are germane to the business of the council means matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, organization, to include campaign information. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Apostle Julian Ricks with the Church of Destiny Center will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Vic will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but are under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for your mighty hand that is upon our lives and upon the lives of the ones who make up this great community. We ask you, Lord, tonight to bless our mayor, bless the council members in the decisions of our community, bless the leaders at every level in our city, give them grace to bring truth, justice, and stability to our community. God, we thank you because your intentions and desire is that our land prospers so that we prosper, so that our community prospers. You desire this because you are a good father who loves to bless his people. Direct us with your wisdom, protect us, give us what we need, eliminate what we don't need in this great community. May your truth be revealed, may your light shine brighter. We pray for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens, now unto him who is able to do exceedingly abundantly above all we can ask or think. We thank you and we praise you in your mighty name. Amen.
Can you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public hearing, page four. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of lease by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia and Fairly Boatworks, Inc., for Seafood Industrial Park, Parcel 12. The requested lease will allow Fairly Boatworks, Inc. to continue to provide vital vessel maintenance services at the Seafood Industrial Park and fabrication services for Huntington Ingalls, Inc. The terms of the new lease will be five years commencing April 1, 2023 and expiring March 31, 2028. The annual rental rate will be seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven and ninety-six cents and an additional thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven and fifteen cents in bulkhead mooring fees for an annual total of one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five and eleven cents. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Mr. Fred?
He's here for questions only.
Questions only? Okay. Do we have any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page thirty-eight. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of lease by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia and Fairly Boatworks, Inc., for city-owned property at Seafood Industrial Park, Parcel 16. The requested lease will allow Fairly Boatworks, Inc. to continue to provide vital vessel maintenance services at the Seafood Industrial Park and fabrication services for Huntington Ingalls, Inc. The term of the new lease will be four years and ten months commencing June 1, 2023 and expiring March 31, 2028. The rental rate will be eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one and twenty cents. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Okay. Are there any questions?
I just want to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Fairly and all that you do in our community, the area that you are in and that you service. I appreciate. We do have a representative I serve on the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and you have a representative who is adamantly out in our community getting people to be employed there. So I really appreciate what you have done and to hear the stories of the people who are able to make above minimum wage and have a successful life. So I just want to add that I appreciate you being in Newport News. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page seventy-two. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a lease by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia and Oyster Point Ventures, Inc., of city-owned property at 901 Clubhouse Way. The city leases an area of the Newport News Golf Course at Deer Run to Oyster Point Ventures, Inc., to manage food service operations. The original 2018 lease expired on December 31, 2022. The proposed lease will be for five years. The rent will be seven thousand, two hundred dollars annually with an additional percentage of gross revenue. Under the contract, Oyster Point Ventures, Inc. will provide daily food service to golfers during the golf course operating hours and to any designated golf outings and special events requested by the golf course. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 106, Minutes of the Work Session of February 28, 2023. Page 142, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of February 28, 2023. Page 159, Ordinance Amending and Reordaining City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Employee Benefits, Division 1, General히 Section 2, TAC 94, Holidays. Page 163, Resolution to Comply with the Budget Public Hearing Notice provisions of Chapter 25 of Title 15-2 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, entitled budgets, audits, and reports. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item F1 through F4, all inclusive?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Other city council actions. Next on our agenda, page 166, item G1, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution, amending Resolution Number 7103-92, en voiding and superseding all other resolutions pertaining to the Newport News Human Services Policy and Management Team, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to say something quickly. I wish we would have had more time during the work session, but I know we got a lot of great information during that time. But I think, and Madam Manager, please correct me, I don't know if we can table this now and get a presentation on what this team is doing. I think it's important that, you know, considering the funds that this team receives, that a member from the policymaking council is a part of the policymaking team. And so if we can get a full presentation for the council so that way they, we all know what this team is doing, I think that would be very beneficial.
It's entirely up to council if you want to defer it. Because there's currently someone in a position that can attend the meetings. This was just to change that. So it's not like there wouldn't be any representation.
Right.
If you had a specific question, I know gender, the human services director is here could answer any questions, but if you'd rather have a presentation, we can certainly do that. It's up to council.
That's, that's why I want to be out. No information to vote.
Is elected representatives still part of the team?
Sorry, say that again.
There's been a motion and a second, and so if there can be a superseding motion or that motion can be withdrawn, there can be a motion to just temporarily defer this to the next meeting.
Okay. I think we had a comment from Councilman Long, and then we can do that motion.
Does elected representative, is that still a part of the team in this resolution? Are they removed from?
No. My understanding is you can have either an elected official or an appointed official currently that's representing the city is an assistant city manager. In the language in there, they're not elected or appointed. This recommendation is to make the city manager or their designee as an appointment, and then the city manager could designate someone to serve. But you still have the option of putting an elected official on there, but this recommendation is to put an appointed position.
Personally feel very comfortable about it, and I think it's been done this way for a very long time. And that I know of, there's no reason we should, you know, defer it. At least that's my, my take.
Is there any more discussion?
I just need more clarity as to what are you saying we would defer it for? What is the entire thing we are deferring it for?
Do you know this team that we're referencing now, what, what, do you know what this team does?
Under, under human services?
Yeah.
I think it's, 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 I guess it's just to get more information because of like right now, it sounds like not a hundred percent sure about what this team is doing. So I'd rather us get the information. Again, this is just me, me speaking. Get the information on what this team is doing because I think the annual reports say they get about eight point two million dollars, and I think it's important that someone from council is a part of that team. But again, this is just.
Is the, is the next step to make a motion?
Yeah. Either the existing motion can be withdrawn or there could be a motion in lieu of the existing motion that would be just to defer this.
Okay.
Well, could I just suggest that unless, I mean, I certainly feel comfortable because maybe I have made myself aware of what they do. So I wonder if it's just, you know, that you're not sure of what they do, if you could investigate it individually.
I think, I think, I think what makes the most sense right now is we just call, someone make a motion, and if it passes, it passes to defer it.
Well, it's already made, second.
Yes, already made a second, so we call for the vote.
I have one last question. Is there a time schedule that we have to meet in order? Is, do we have to make the decision right now? Is there a meeting scheduled that we're trying to get in front of to be a part of?
Not that I'm aware of. As I said, the current appointee is Alan Archer, the assistant city manager. He was still served in that capacity.
Doesn't really comply with the state code, which says it should be an elected official or an appointed official, and assistant city managers neither. So if, if the council were to vote for this tonight, it would make the city manager the appointed official, the person, but she can designate someone to go. And then if council decides they'd rather have one of their members go, this can be amended again.
Okay.
To substitute a council member in lieu of the city manager.
But to your point, this has been, Colley makes a good point, but this has been in place for, for a while.
Yeah, it really has.
And I'm comfortable with what is in place, but I just, for the fact that, you know, we have council members who, you know, maybe more that feel that they want more information. That's why, you know, feel that way. I don't mind having more information, but I am comfortable with what we have.
And I just want, would like to add for situations like this, if there's been some discussion before it's gotten on the agenda, that it's, that we table it and have a discussion at the work session, that I think that would be very much in order.
Since we don't, we're not on time crunch, I'm okay with deferring and bringing it back to the work session, bring it back to council to talk about it again, if that's the pleasure.
Councilman Woodbury, your motion is for?
I, I want to go ahead and carry it because, because just for the simple fact of order, I think it has, if it has been something that was determined that it was, wasn't right before it got on this agenda, because that is what needed to happen, that it should not have made it to the agenda. That's where I stand.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Well, if apparently you've had some discussion with somebody that, that you, you don't feel it's in the right order before, before it got on the agenda, because if, if that was the case, why would, why would we have put it on the agenda instead of just put it on the work session? So there could have been a presentation from human services and everybody involved for clarity before we even put it on the agenda. So that's why I'm going to continue to move forward with it.
Okay.
I was not aware of any issues.
I didn't, haven't been aware of any issues.
This was just more formalizing what the current process is to be in line, as the city attorney said, with the city manager designee. But we'd be happy to provide any additional information that council may want.
So is there any more discussion before we carry out the original motion? Okay. So hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Against.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Against.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Against.
Mayor Jones?
Against.
Motion fail, four zero, four, I'm错了, four three.
Page 171, item G2, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution of the council of the city of Newport News, Virginia, stating its support of the Virginia American Revolution Commission and authorizing the city manager to assemble a committee to support local programs during the commemoration period, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All have some discussion. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who sent all the emails. I think we received dozens of them, and I'm excited for this celebration that we can announce the support of this. So thank you, Madam Manager. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Page 174, item G3, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an animal control services agreement between the city of Newport News, Virginia and the city of Pecosin, Virginia for the provision of animal control services, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Page 185, item G4, Madam Manager.
Request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Newport News, Virginia and the city of Hampton, Virginia for the provision of animal control services, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
Between, read, would you read that again?
This is between the city of Newport News and the city of Hampton, but it's a mutual aid agreement, which is different than the item you did before, which was for us actually to provide with Pecosin animal control services. This is mutual aid. If we need to go into Hampton or Hampton needs to come to assist, then that's what this would cover, as opposed to us actually providing the service in Pecosin.
Without actually providing services.
In Pecosin we do, and it's a very small, but not in Hampton.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Page 195, item G5, Madam Manager.
Request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the First Lease Amendment by and between the Peninsula Airport Commission and the city of Newport News, Virginia for the city use of a fire station located at 1,000 Blaine Boulevard on the property of the Newport News Williamsburg International Airport, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Page 200, item G6, Madam Manager.
A request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a co-jurisdictional sanitary sewer service agreement by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia and the city of Hampton, Virginia, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
So second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Appropriations. We have none submitted for item H. We will now move forward to item I, Citizen Comments. Item I, Citizen Comments on Matters Germane to the Business of City Council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Mr. Edward Whitley?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for seeing me this evening. I was here last month and spoke on the Confederate Monument from Warwick County. I am here again this month to ask you to put it, the Warwick Monument for the Confederate Dead, on your agenda to re-erect it at one of the four locations that I asked last month. War Memorial in Huntington Park, at Le Hall, not Le Hall, at Inview, at the graves of the Confederate soldiers in the Grove, at Riverview Farm Park, or at Dam Number One in Newport News Park. All these locations are really in old Warwick. The Warwick Board of Supervisors, when that monument was erected, gave it perpetual care. What this city did when they disassembled it and stored it is not perpetual care. These men died for this commonwealth. This commonwealth asked these men to protect it, just like we have always protected our state and our country. They were not traitors. They had not. They were not traitors, they had nothing to do with being traitors. The Commonwealth left this nation by law that the Constitution gave them. It was taught at West Point, your alma mater, sir, that the state's rights came first, and the states had the right to leave. Robert E. Lee, when the state left, stayed with the state. They were not traitors, they were men of honor protecting their land. Some people say that those monuments were put up for Jim Crow. Jim Crow started in eighteen seventy-seven. Eighteen seventy-seven was about the time that the military, uh, state of Virginia, District Number One, was being released and becoming a state again, and that's when the people started raising their money to build these monuments. I ask again, please put it on the agenda to re-erect the monument at one of those four locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simon Purnell.
Uh, greetings, everyone. Peace and blessings. Jambu Habariyako, Assalamu Alaykum. Uh, I am excited to be here today. Uh, greetings, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Jones, uh, Mr. Bethany, and the remaining council members here today. I am Prince Njatika, and at this moment, I'd like to invoke the spirit of my ancestors within me for allowing me this opportunity to share with you the commemorative efforts of two very influential African-American leaders, Huey P. Noon and Bobby Seale, in establishing the Black Panther Party. The Black Panther Party was established in Oakland, California, in nineteen sixty-six. The Black Panther Party was originally incorporated as the Black Panther Party for Self-Defense and was initially established to monitor and protect our African-American oppressed communities from police brutality. The Black Panther Party, while establishing the organization, developed a set of goals and objectives which they demanded from the government. These goals consisted of ten objectives, which they referred to as points. Here are the ten points. Point one, we want the power to determine the destiny of our black and oppressed communities. Point two, we want full employment for our people. Point three, we want an end to the robbery of the capitalist nations. Point four, we want decent shelter, decent housing suitable for human living conditions. Point five, we want decent education that teaches us our contributions in society. Point six, we want to be exempt from the military services. Point seven, we want an immediate end to police brutality. Point eight, we want black people free from the prisons and the jails. Point nine, we want black people given a retrial from the prisons and the jails. Point ten, we want better land, we want better housing, better shelter, better clothing, and more peace and more justice. And my purpose is to reintroduce to you the ten-point program of the Black Panther Party fifty years ago in order to establish a more diplomatic approach to improving our African-American communities here in Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michael Bartley.
Mayor, Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Bethany, members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've spoken many times, uh, this year about the, uh, educational, um, state we have in our city, and I'm trying to come here with solutions, and so I'm going to talk about what I like to call the HUDDAP miracle. So this is what happened over ten years in a really great city to, uh, go to, not wanting to stay too at, because probably gained five hundred pounds if you stayed there. But they, uh, they originally, um, over the ten years, they started with, uh, Sixty-seventh out of sixty-eight in the state for education. They improved to Forty-first out of sixty-nine. Uh, originally, they had, uh, sixty-two percent of their schools were failing, that went to seven. Um, their graduation rates and college attendance rates both increased by fifty percent, their ACT scores went up by one point four points, despite more students taking the test, which normally drags your score down. And during this time, the, the state of the city went from seventy-two percent free lunch to eighty-four, so that's worse, you got more poverty, and impoverished students went from thirty-two percent to thirty-nine, and they spent twenty-eight percent less per student. And so what happened? Well, New Orleans had a hurricane hit them, and then, when they wanted to recover, the superintendent wanted the schools to come back, so she approved all charter schools. If you wanted to open a school, your charter's approved, and they went from twenty percent charter to eighty percent charter over those ten years, and this is a remarkable improvement, it's what everyone wants, and it even costs less money. So, I know that we are not starting nearly as low as New Orleans was, and so we can do more improvement, and I know we're a Dillon State, so you guys can only do so much, but what I think we could do is possibly try and encourage turning Rich Neck Elementary School into a charter school. I know a parent there, he's really mad that they shut down the transfer window right after the shooting. He wants his kids out of there, and the school system won't let you go to any other school system, he's locked in. He's trying to move out of the city so that his kids will not be stuck in that place. And if we just give more money to the school system, they're just going to give another half million dollars to a superintendent, or something stupid like that, instead of maybe sending the kids to a private school, because forty-six kids for a year could go to Trini Lutheran at their rates, um, and with that half a million dollars we spent on the superintendent. And I really think you guys hold the power of the purse, I'd like you to encourage to try and create a charter school there, so we can start giving parents choices, so we can have our own miracle in education as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Ladies first.
I just wanted to know, have you spoken to the school board?
I speak to the school board every time, except the last meeting, because I was, uh, out of town.
Okay, thank you.
My question for you is, did you write all of that down on that little piece of paper?
I did, yeah. Well, I, I can't read full, I just had the stats on this little piece of paper.
Well, I commend you for that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jerry Ferguson.
Hello, I'm Jerry Ferguson, fourteen-horsepin road. I'm here again tonight representing the thirty-two residents of Flax Mill Creek that oppose the trail that is being built. We're disappointed in the letter we received from Parks and Rec. Our concerns have erupted, have been dismissed abruptly, communications stopped. We've sent letters to the city council, emails to the city council and the city manager, no one responds. Why are concerns not taken seriously? During the invocation, I heard the city council should do best for the citizens, you're not. Also heard the vice mayor bring up a point, so I wrote this down. He wants somebody with knowledge, direct knowledge on this team. We were not part of the team, the so-called Citizens Committee, that approved, that came up with this trail. Why were the people not directly affected, a part of that committee? We've asked about the committee, we haven't got any responses from that. The mayor, councilwoman Long, came out, when they came out, they were, they agreed with us, this was not a good thing, but then all of a sudden, somebody changed their mind. Is it because we don't have a ten million dollar check to give you? That seems to be the only thing that you guys care about is money. The amount of litter we have seen recently down in the creek is uncalled for, whereas the people, y'all said the city park rangers and stuff, there's trash there now, who's going to take care of all the additional trash? The trash is not just in the creek, now it's on my property. I shouldn't be responsible for that. My wife saw teenagers walking back there the other day. No one was there to stop them, and they weren't on the public park, they were on people's private property. It's only going to get worse. The resale value of our houses, natural habitat concerns, we're supposedly supposed to hear information about community meetings mitigate, uh, in a mitigation committee, none of that's been brought up. How can we trust the city to be diligent in minimizing negative impact when you blatantly disregard our concerns?
Thank you. Ms. Angela Harris.
Thirty years later, I still don't see no improvement. Um, I really, really like the way my council look, Woodbury is the only one we have to get rid of now, um, and I think I might be moving in your district just to run against you. Um, I'm appalled with just a little bit that I heard from the time that I got here, just trying to be here for the citizen comment period, um, it hasn't got no better in thirty years. Um, the last time that I even took a note of it, um, Mamie Baker was sitting on council when we had a real council, um, that did something. Um, and I'm appalled, um, but y'all look good, um, give a hand for the new council. I hope that the young people, um, get something done, and I know that you all have a lot to work through, um, because the council before y'all and the one before that, they did a lot of crazy stuff, but we can read and we can write and we can comprehend, so we still good. I want to remind everybody that's listening to my voice about the nineteen fifty-eight merger, that Hampton, Newport News, and Warwick County were supposed to merge as one. The last time I was here, this council, not this council, but the council before this, voted on the King Wyom Reservoir, which, for whatever reason, if y'all haven't read that, that cut us off from our water supply from the regional level, and Woodbury know exactly what I'm talking about, because she was here. Uh, this council has been out of line and out of order for a great little while, in fact, we only have three minutes to speak, when we used to have five, when we had a real council. Woodbury, you know what I'm talking about. Woodbury, you worked at Hampton Institute, now Hampton University, and I know that you've seen that fire that was on blazing, which was the first bank, as we talk about our freedmen's story. I want to encourage everyone to go to the Hampton Museum, because our story is on display, the Coe Story. Uh, Ms. Vick, as we talk about, uh, arid property, I read a wonderful story today that talks about the Vick in the United States of America. As we talk about arid property, my name is Angela Harris, my mother's name is Mary Williams, her mother's name was Rosetta Hill, her mother's name was Mary Virgin Thomas, her mother's name was Rosa Gray, and her mother's name was Mary Brown. I want to say to my cousin B two, I understand, we got a big responsibility as we talk about what they did to us up at Christopher Newport. I want to say that I am writing to that book, Planters and Pioneers, with Mark Wagner. I met Saturday with John Kornstein up at the Mariners Museum, and I also met with the other people up at the War Memorial Museum. John Ely, if you did not know, that Ely family ties to a Thomas family, and our Thomas family built the first house of prayer for all people, the Mother House. The Mother House, there is now a house of prayer in all fifty states and three countries. So when you come into deal in this section of Newport News, Mr. Jones, I want to remind you that the oldest house on Fort Ustis is a Jones house, please go visit, and Ms. Woodbury, answer your phone when I'm calling. Cynthia, answer your phone, I'm still trying to meet with you, and you, and it's like, like, three months later, answer your phone.
Thank you.
Pick the phone up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because we work with the Dutch dialogues. Pick the phone up, and where's Alan Archer? Please be in that meeting when I meet with him, Cynthia, because I've been there looking for you, let's have a conversation about what you did.
Thank you, ma'am.
During the pandemic, okay? Do you talk?
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, do you talk? I love you, Cynthia.
Next, ne-
Don't forget, is that you, did you forget your purse?
Uh, new business, our next item is new business, uh, Madam Manager.
Nothing, sir.
City Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk.
Nothing, sir.
Councilwoman Vick.
Yes, I would like to, um, just, uh, remind everyone about the, um, Let's Talk Parenting meeting that I'm hosting on Wednesday, March the twenty-second, as I mentioned from my last council meeting, and the reason I wanted to have this meeting is because, you know, we are all concerned about the crime in our city and, and some of the issues in our city that may not be even shooting, but, uh, children that are around in the community are causing problems for particularly our elderly, and so I have watched over the years that whenever there's a problem, people blame the police, they blame the government, they blame the schools, but I feel like until we can include the parents and the community, we won't have a complete way to, um, find solutions to the answers that can help our children. And so we will be meeting, I would love all parents to attend, we will be meeting from six-thirty to eight at the Bridgingham Midtown Community Center, so please come out, it's really just a meeting to be able to hear your ideas, to be able to talk about what, what is it that we can do, because as citizens, we have to figure out that we can't just watching, keep watching things happen, but we have to be a part of the solutions to make our communities better. And the last thing I want to say, um, there was so much on the news, uh, this week about it being the second anniversary of the, um, Biden-Harris Administration sending federal government, um, funding to our states and cities to be able to help us during a time that, um, it was unprecedented about the COVID-nineteen virus. You know, the early part of, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, people were afraid, I know I was, my family was, because we did not know what was happening. We had, uh, the loss of jobs, the loss of businesses, school closings, and the government closing, so I really want to, um, show appreciation for the Biden-Harris Administration going through our Department of Treasury to be able to distribute sixty-five point one billion dollars, um, throughout our nation to be able to help us, um, gain security from all of the businesses, it helped us with business survival, it helped us recover job losses, it helped us support our schools, particularly our kids that did not have any computers to be able to learn from home, um, housing assistance, inclusive of tenant assistance and landlord assistance for our residents. But here in Newport News, I want to just say that, um, thank our city manager, and I'm trying to do, uh, both, uh, technology to, tonight, but I want to thank our city manager, the entire staff, because we were, you know, nervous about everything, the unknown and the devastation, but in our health and wellness, um, well-being, we were able to do five million dollars in permanent supportive housing, we were able to do over three million dollars in mental health initiatives, our police, the Shot Sparta expansion, five hundred thousand dollars, our education and learning, we were able to invest fourteen million, a little over fourteen million dollars in our Early Childhood Education Center, our Opportunity in Economic Prosperity, one million dollars, our Birthplace of America Trail, over one million dollars, our Choice Neighborhood Transformation, twenty-six, over twenty-six million dollars, and our Denby Warwick Area Property Acquisition, four million dollars, Quality Government Innovation, our ongoing COVID-nineteen operation expenses, over one million dollars, and our public building renovation repairs to help with our HVAC and our, um, upkeep of our public buildings, over seven million dollars, because from that act, the ARPA funds, we were able to get here in Newport News, over sixty-six million dollars to be able to help our community survive. So I want to say, um, thank you, and a commemoration, a great commemora- commemoration to two years of rescue from our federal government, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Neely.
I would like to say congratulations to Woodside High School. Me and Curtis had the opportunity to attend the, um, final, well, the final game, Curtis, yeah, semifinals, of cour- Curtis at the finals game, so congratulations to Woodside, congratulations to Stephon for being named Coach of the Year, as well as was able to attend CNU game, um, they did an amazing job, very interested in game with the boys, so hopefully do well in the final four. Also, um, yesterday I had the opportunity to speak at the Cooper Foundation Home to talk with young children about entrepreneurship, and they was as young as seven years old, had businesses, so it was very good to speak with them, to share my experience as far as entrepreneurship. I also had an amazing time at the One City Marathon, it was good to see so many people from just not Virginia, from all over the United States, just giving praises on how good Newport News was, how this is one of the best races they compete in, so, Owen, you did an amazing job, you and your team, it was good to hear such great, um, comments. Also, I'd like to thank two organizations we have here, Huntington Alumni and Catch More Kids, thank you all for always coming to city council meetings and supporting us, we really appreciate you, and that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Hey, good evening, and thank you for everyone who is in attendance and everyone who is-
Thank you all for always coming to city council meetings and supporting us, we really appreciate you. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Hey, good evening. Thank you for everyone who is in attendance and everyone who is just sharing on tonight. I just have a couple things, kind of echo Councilmember Ely's comments. I do want to say congratulations to the Woodside High School basketball team on winning the state basketball championship. And we look forward to the day when they come in and we're able to recognize them, as we have done in the past. And also want to say a big thanks to Katie Shehan Smith, who's a Newport News Public Schools Visual and Performing Arts Supervisor, and she organized a day trip for all of the fifth graders in the city of Newport News to attend the Virginia Symphony, Symphony concert, can't get the word out, at CNU. And it was amazing to see all those young people throughout the, throughout the city at that event to be exposed to something that many of them would never, or haven't had the opportunity to see a live symphony. And it was just an enjoyable experience. And all her hard work to coordinate, to get every fifth grader in the city of Newport News over there, it was amazing to see how they orchestrated all of that. So I just wanted to give her a shout out for doing that, because she didn't have to. And that's going to be an experience that those young people will remember forever, as they were all jumping up, singing the songs. I guess they had learned in their middle, their elementary music class, and they were performing those at the event. So just wanted to thank her for doing all that for our young people here in the city. As academics, arts, athletics, they all go together, and that helps, you know, increase our youth development here in the city. So thank you to her, and that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Councilman Woodbury?
Thank you. I bring you greetings tonight, I should be bringing from Carrigaleen Island, because we were supposed to leave this morning or be all night long last night, flying over there, but our, our plane got canceled. So we're going to try again tomorrow. We have a new sister city, Carrigaleen Island, and I hope to be, I hope we get to go tomorrow. And I will bring you a report back when I get back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Long?
Always thank you for coming to participate in the city council meeting, bringing comments and concerns. I want to address the, the Flex Mill meeting. Cindy, are we, do we have a time period or it's scheduled? Because we, we talked about having a mitigation meeting with the neighbors, and we're going to have a public notice sent to each door that's along the street, and so you can come out and participate in the meeting. So I just want to make sure we're still in line, we're actually having this meeting, so we can move-
I know the notice is when I- I don't know if the meeting has been scheduled. Yeah, it has, both.
Yes, our Parks and Rec Director, Michael Poplowski, is right now is planning to conduct another meeting with the Flex Mill Creek residents. Right now, I think it's projected for the twenty-ninth of March right now.
Twenty-ninth of March, okay.
That's correct.
So just make sure-
Has that been one?
There has, there has been past meetings.
Well, I know that, but I mean, there were many meetings over the years before this was-
That's correct. And we can, we can provide the background on what meetings have, have occurred between the director and others, as well as HRSD that has reached out to the, to the residents themselves.
Just let me know when that meeting's going to take place, so we make sure the residents are going to be present for that mitigation meeting.
Certainly.
Thank you. That's all the comments.
Vice Mayor?
As Councilman Ely stated, we, we did go to the Woodside Quarterfinal Game, and then also had the pleasure of being at the state championship game in Richmond, which came down to a buzzer beater, which was phenomenal, incredible win. And it did so much for our district, we definitely needed a win. You know, year didn't start off the best, but this is a story about perseverance, and that's exactly what they did. And CNU, we did get to go to watch CNU play in the Final Four. They're playing, actually no, it was a game Elite Eight, excuse me. They're playing in the Final Four this week. So that will be another huge opportunity for the city to capitalize off that. So just want to say congratulations to them. And then the apprentice school is also in the Final Four this week. All this great, all the great things that are happening in Newport News right now, and it's phenomenal. And I just hope that it gets the proper coverage that it, that it deserves. And then the last thing that I have is to wish Councilman Ely an early happy birthday. Your birthday is Friday, or Sunday, so-
No, 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 no. It starts Friday. It ends next Friday.
Okay, well, three happy birthdays to you, and look forward to seeing you at the next council meeting.
Hopefully.
No, he will be here, yes. And that is all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a few comments on, on my end, a few thank yous. I want to say thank you to Owen and all the city staff and the volunteers that helped in the, the marathon. Really excited for next year with our tenth year anniversary, to make it bigger and better. But thank you for all the hard work that went into that. Second, special shout out to our communications team for the city. They've been working around the clock with this new branding strategy. I'm a, I'm a business, business guy, and I understand the importance of a brand. And so the brand is the, the soul of your city. And so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, you'll be seeing a lot of initiatives and new pilot projects that we're going to present about how can we reposition the brand of Newport News. I want to wish safe travels to Councilman Woodbury. I'll be there at hopefully eight-thirty tomorrow and see, and see you off on your, on your flight. But I think as you look at the brand of Newport News, by us establishing another sister city in Europe, that helps to like, help with the, the global narrative of what Newport News is, so, so safe travels. My last comment, and on a more, on a more serious note, I would like to speak on sort of decorum that's, that's going to happen in, in this hall, right? It's a sort of, our democracy works, it's a two-way contract. The contract is that people are elected, they hopefully make the best decision for the good of the citizens. Is it Mr., Mr. Bartley? I've actually, so my, my, my father's from New Orleans, like my grandmother's Creole. And so I, I understand a lot of what happened in New Orleans and the charter schools, but thank you for bringing that up. That is, I think, a, we're not going to agree on everything, but I think it's important that everyone's voice is heard. Additionally, I also want to remind everyone that when you look at Newport News, right, it's the fifth largest city in Virginia, what, a hundred and forty-second biggest city in the country. It's a five-hundred-and-sixty-eight million dollar operating budget, and Lisa, what, including, including capital, one point one billion-ish, right? So that's a lot of stakeholders. And so we're not going to agree on everything, but I just want to clarify one more time, and hopefully we never have to say it again, is that in this chamber, as long as I sit in this middle chair, there's going to be decorum here, there's not going to be pointing at people, there's not going to be calling people by their names, everyone has a title here, they were elected. So I don't want to have to say it again, but thank you so much for everyone coming out. I'll talk to Mr. Ferguson. If you stay in the back, I'll come talk to you, we can figure out next steps. And Catch More Kids, I want to talk to you as well. I think that's all that I have. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.